Ross, here. Hamilton?
Here.
Hart?
Present.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Insalaco?
Here.
Coram, Miss President.
Coram, Miss President. Thank you. Everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance and prayer of Mr. John Barber.
Mayor heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you once again this evening. We thank you, Lord, for all that you do for us. We thank you for the cooler weather and we just ask for wisdom and grace this evening as we make decisions about the city. And as always, Lord, we ask for your protection upon the first responders and the electric department, Lord, as they go out and they help us each and every day. So protect them, we pray, in Jesus's name and all God's people said.
Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second. Motion, second. On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Thank you. If anyone would like to, wants to pull any communications produced, oh, if not, I'll ask for a yes to motion accept and file. Motion accept and file.
Second.
And there's a second on communications. They're all. Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson? Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to, for presentations, Mr. Henry Shepherd with Diamond Baseball Holdings. I know he's in the audience somewhere, but, oh, you are, Henry. Thank you. I'd like for you to come on up and speak to my counsel, if you don't mind, and tell us a little bit about Diamond Holdings and Dicky Stevens, if you don't mind, please. Floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Hartwick, and thank you to the council for the time tonight. It's a privilege to be here. Thank you, guys, for dialing up the cool weather. For someone from Houston, it is, this is a special place and we're really excited about what you guys have going on in North Little Rock, from convention centers coming online to, you know, new hotel builds that have been in the works for years. We really believe in what you guys are doing. I just had an amazing meal at Blackberry Market across the street and are really excited to kind of lead the Trav's in partnership with everyone before me here to and through their next chapter for what we are in negotiations with the mayor for, you know, plus or minus 20 years. We believe in this, we believe in this city. We believe in the tailwinds behind this. We'd like to play a small part in propelling forward the vision that you guys have before you every single day. We are making a playoff run. We've got four top 100 prospects in baseball. We've got someone from Seattle in the audience tonight. We won the Texas League last year.
Stop, stop. Where is he? Come on. Oh, I got you. Go ahead. I'm teasing.
And so, you know, we'd love to welcome you guys out to the ballpark for our last 10 games or so. But what I want to talk about tonight is so much more than a championship last year or 10 more games this year. It's hopefully for decades to come into the future. And so Diamond Baseball bought the team, call it a year ago, and have been working very hard on our core baseball operation, which I consider to be ticketing. We want to use strategies and tactics to activate this ballpark for your constituents to get more butts in seats. We want to provide the best food and beverage experience in minor league baseball. We want to make the sponsorship inventory incredibly valuable for companies here in North Little Rock, to make the Trav's one of the most valuable AA teams in minor league baseball. So our core baseball operation is our bread and butter. It's what we do every day, and it's critical to the success of this team and what it means to the city. The other thing that's very critical to what Dicky Stevens and the Trav's mean to the city is what we do when baseball games are not going on. And we believe as tenants of your city-owned facility that the onus is on us to activate this ballpark every single day in any manner we can. And so what we're very focused on is making investments at Diamond Baseball in human capital and resources to bring things like concerts, bring things like winter festivals that stay here from Thanksgiving to Jan. 1, Halloween festivals for two weeks in October, proms, HBCU classics, high school baseball games. We want to share the ballpark with the city. If you guys want to run events there, we truly believe that Dicky Stevens Park, Diamond Baseball, and the Travelers succeed the most if we are truly in a public-private partnership with you guys, rowing in the same direction to make it the most valuable, affordable, family-friendly, community asset it can be. So a few other things I want to discuss. Charity. How do we engage with community? The Trav's have a great foundation run by Lance Restrom. We have recently made hires at Diamond Baseball on the nonprofit side to ensure that our teams, like the Trav's, are deeply and intentionally engaging their community and giving back to the communities that give to us. And so I want to make sure that's very clear. And then the last thing I'll hit on is real estate. Diamond Baseball is evaluating a variety of different markets to understand how we can activate around our ballparks, how we can invest in hotels, retail, green space, entertainment venues, et cetera, et cetera. We have, we've announced one project in Louisville, Kentucky, which is going to be somewhere around a $250 million development, partnership with Mayor Greenberg and the Louisville Metro Government. But that's something that we are evaluating here and many other places. And so the table stakes for us to continue that work is ensuring that we have a long-term future here. And ensuring that we have a long-term future here, I hope, is, has a very vested interest with you guys as you guys propel the city forward, bringing new businesses here, new businessmen here, new conventions here. The baseball team has a big role to play there. And so we believe that the Trav's and Dicky Stevens has somewhere between $10 and $20 million of annual economic impact. And if we're doing our jobs right at Diamond Baseball, we will progress that forward every single day. And so, all that to say, I'm extremely grateful for your time. I'm grateful for your vision, what you're building here. We wouldn't be here today talking about a long-term lease extension if we didn't believe fundamentally in what you guys are doing. And so we're very grateful for that. And I would like to answer any questions you guys have. I'm happy to, you know, in partnership with you guys, answer any questions. And as it always goes, I should introduce myself to end, which I oversee, my name's Henry Shepherd. I oversee our mergers and acquisitions, our stadiums and facilities, our real estate development, and our charitable foundation work. So thank you, guys, all for the time. I'm very grateful, very excited to be here, very excited to work with the mayor and you guys for the long-term future of the Trav's. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and please prompt me, Mayor, if I forgot anything that, that I should have hit.
Thank you, Henry. Appreciate it. Anybody? Nicole?
Yeah, I heard you say that the economic impact, the revenue was 20 million per year?
So, and so I would say, I'm not necessarily talking about specific revenue to us or to anyone. It's more about people we're bringing here, visiting teams we're bringing here, sponsorship we're bringing here, business eyeballs we're bringing here, how we're activating this ballpark. And so we believe that as we activate this ballpark in baseball and much beyond, we should be filling hotels. We should be bringing new businesses here. We should make your convention center more valuable because there's a baseball team that can host an event, things like that. And so that's how we think about kind of annual economic impact on the community that we serve.
Okay, so from the perspective of annual economic impact, have you seen a growth that you all have had in that area from the time that you started here in the city to now?
So it's a great question, Ms. Hart. We, we, this is kind of our first full year of running the team, and so we don't really have a tent pole to kind of put a stake in the round for the growth that we have. I think we have seen growth in the city, for sure. We've seen growth in this team because we have really awesome people managing it here on the ground. But what I was discussing with the mayor is we should be seeing kind of hockey stick growth going forward if we really can do our jobs right and invest in bringing more people to the ballpark.
Thank you. Anybody else? One comment.
Mr. Harris.
Henry, I just want to say that, you know, I, I would like to go to more baseball games. I don't, but I'm, that's just, that's just me. But I'm telling you, from what I've seen this year, I've seen some growth with what's going on. And I certainly appreciate what you're doing. And if you're growing now, the future is just very bright with everything we've got going on. And I'll, I'll end with this one last subject. I built some houses for people within Rockwater, and they loved your drone shows, okay?
Great. I do, too.
So more drone shows, and that's because they, they love those venues.
Well, thank you, Mr. Harris. I appreciate the comments. And I can, I can assure you and everyone here that we are investing considerable time and money to see the growth. And so my commitment to you guys is we are going to continue investing to grow this thing every year. And, and, and slow growth or no growth is not really an option. So I appreciate your observation, and we'll certainly continue that going forward.
Anybody, Ms. Ross?
And one of the things I want to say is that park has been so underutilized. Is it on? Okay.
It's on.
Okay, so it's been underutilized. And to know that you are looking at doing, you know, events, I mean, that thing could be used, you know, three times a week, possibly. So if someone wanted to reach out to have an event there, who would they contact?
So I would, I would encourage them to contact Sophie Ozier, who's our general manager, who's here today, and she's done a great job there. They can contact myself, Diamond Baseball. You know, I was, I was just speaking with Sophie. We are working very hard to get Savannah Bananas types brands in there. We're working very hard to bring concerts, big and small. But we agree, and one of the reasons we were so excited to be here is because the ballpark has been underutilized. And there are tailwinds in North Little Rock that make people want to be here. And so we should be utilizing the heck out of that ballpark to serve the community, and that's part of the lease that we have, and we need to uphold that, and the onus is on us. So I appreciate the comment, and that's top of mind for us.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Baxter?
So just kind of curious. I know you own several franchises at all the different minor league levels, right? So how many do you own that actually play in city-owned properties?
We own 45 teams and 42 play in city-owned, or publicly owned properties.
Okay. And then what is your average length of contract with all of those?
It's a great question. I would say average length of contract.
You can just ballpark it.
The, no pun intended, right? Look, so I would say when we are, when we're doing contracts, kind of renegotiations or extensions, usually it's like a five to 10-year because the facility is already worn and old. When we're initiating a new contract in a new ballpark, it's going to be a 20 to 30-year. And so you see the full gamut. We really, and I hope the mayor would agree, but we've worked in great partnership, and we want to make something that works for both of us. Here, we're discussing a long-term extension because we believe in this municipality. So I, I mean, it's hard to put a number on it. I would say an extension term average is probably 10 years. However, I'd have to look back at that.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more question.
Ms. Hart?
You said that you had several franchises. So with those franchises, so this is in the ward that I serve as a representative, too. And so I wanted to ask, were there any passion projects that work with underdeveloped communities in the other franchises that has projects or just initiatives that you have seen that have been able to help grow those underdeveloped areas in other communities and franchises that you've worked with?
By the way, your ballpark's in her ward.
Okay.
Oh, I thought.
It is, it is a great question, and I appreciate it. I think the thing that excites me most about what we do is that we pride ourselves on being the affordable, family-friendly entertainment option to these markets. And so across our 45 teams, our average ticket price is somewhere around $15 blended with, you know, $5 tickets up to $70 tickets to make sure that we can serve everyone. I would say that top of mind for us, and I hit on this earlier, and I oversee this element of our business, is our nonprofit initiatives in our 501(c)(3)'s. And so how are we going, not very far from our ballpark, how are we going to the near area and engaging underprivileged communities, ensuring that we're providing, maybe it's providing baseball equipment, maybe it's opening our doors to come meet players, maybe it's making sure that they have access to great seats at a game to introduce them to the sport. And so we have tons of, we have almost 45 nonprofits that are engaging in general our underprivileged communities in the communities we serve. And so you're never going to see us go outside of the greater central Arkansas area in our nonprofit activities because, because we want to engage with these people. And so I would say we have a ton of precedent. I would say the team here does a nice job. We can always do better, and that's, that's a very high focus of mine and ours, and we'll be in the years to come. And so I'm not sure if you had anything specific, but it's definitely something we want to do more of, and it's something we already do.
Okay. Anybody else? I know the press is, Henry, thank, or I'm sorry, go ahead. Follow this.
Thank you. Y'all have, I've
Y'all have, I repeat what Councilmember Harris has said. I've seen some, some great movements that y'all have done. In terms of long-term, the long-term aspect and the long-term public-private partnership, I'm definitely a fan of that. As a former 15-year season-ticket holder, but then I had kids. And, and utilizing the stadium more, I saw Dave Matthews Band there, and that was the last big concert we had 15 years ago, I guess. But, so, we love the fact that you're investing. What's it going to take from us? Where are we at in the negotiations? I mean, what are we going to be asked to do to secure this fantastic opportunity? Which I think is...
Excuse me. For Henry and I will be in negotiations to bring y'all a contract that we think we can pass. With that, I'm sure there may be a bond issue we'll have to issue at that time. So we're, we're negotiations down. I expect to have something back to y'all, hopefully, over the end of this year.
Yeah, I think that's fair. And, Mr. Hamilton, I hear your point. I mean, last year, we brought Miranda Lambert, a Tier A country act, to Altoona, Pennsylvania, which is the smallest market in AA baseball. That, that is not something that I think most ownership groups would do, and I, I hope that's a tidbit of kind of what we want to do here. And we view ourselves as a live entertainment business, not just a baseball business, because we should be activating that thing. And so the, the mayor said it well, and the mayor's been a great partner. We're in negotiations, and Major League Baseball is kind of working with us to ensure that we can kind of continue the longevity of AA Seattle Mariners here in Arkansas for, you know, hopefully decades to come.
Meanwhile, what happens here, when we get a little bit further into it, I'll bring Amy involved with it because it will be a contract, so she'll be involved with it from the time we really get serious, and then we'll bring it to you guys at that point. Yes, sir?
One last comment.
All right.
Season ticket holder for 15 years, I don't recall getting any invitation from you.
Discuss it after the meeting. Anybody else? I know the press would like to see you, Henry. Thank you for taking time coming up from Houston tonight. I appreciate everything you're doing. I do, very much.
Thank you. You guys, I really appreciate it. Thank you for your consideration. We're very excited. So thank you, guys.
Appreciate it very much. I'll let y'all go ahead and get out, and then see you in a minute. By the way, I did see Rusty Meeks, Rusty, did he already get out the door? Did Rusty leave already? Okay. All right, sorry. I just want to make sure he was seen. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you so very much. Where are we right now, Taylor?
Consent agenda.
All right, consent agenda. If anybody would like to pull it on, if not, I'll ask for a voice vote from R. 25133 to R. 25136. If I can get that voice vote of aye?
Aye.
Of say no? None? Please?
R. 25137?
No, we already, we already, I said 125137, correct?
Correct.
Go ahead. I need to get to that because that's going to be a public hearing, if I'm not mistaken. Correct? All right, go ahead and read it, and let me call it that way, okay? Please, ma'am?
Okay. A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 4105 Rogers Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Thank you. I need to convene a public hearing. I'm convening one of those wishing to speak for or against R. 25137. Please come to the microphone, those wishing to speak for or against. Seeing none, I'll adjourn this public, convene this public hearing. Go ahead and call it first.
Motion adopted.
Second. Second, motion adopted, second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Solaco?
Yes.
R. 25, 25138?
I'm going to hold that one. I had a call from a constituent today that they had not been notified. I've talked to Felicia, so we'll make sure all the paperwork will be going to them, and we'll bring it up in the next two weeks, okay?
R. 25139?
Mayor Hartwick?
Please.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 4812 Atkins Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Thank you. I need to convene a public hearing again. One is in session, those wishing to speak for or against R. 25139. Please come to the microphone. Wish to speak for or against R. 25139. When you come, please identify yourself, please, sir. Please, identify yourself.
Well, I'm Percy Flowers. I didn't understand what it means. But my brother...
Okay, go ahead.
Was over a property, and I just took it over. I got a buyer for it. He ain't coming in town till September the 10th. And I need to get it, he gonna buy it, and I need to, a little time to get it.
So tell me, how much time you need, sir?
Sir?
How much more time do you need?
Well, he, he gonna be here September the 10th, so I should be like 30 days, 60 days, whatever.
Most pleasures of the council on this. Go ahead, Nathan.
I mean, that's what the, after we condemn it, then there's the rehabilitation process, right?
That's what I was about to say. Go ahead, Amy.
That is correct. If the city council votes tonight to condemn it, within 30 days, you, or if your brother purchases the property, can get in touch with me, and we can talk about doing a rehab agreement for you to bring the structure back up to code. When, when we do that, you have 180 days or six months to, to, to get the property up to code, and we require placing the estimated amount of demolition into an escrow account so that if it's not brought up to code, then, then we have the funds to go ahead and demo it.
Is your address 320 East 47th Street?
Yes.
Okay, I want to be sure, okay. So do you understand everything our city attorney said?
Yes.
Yes, and so if, if the, I mean, and I don't know how the council will vote, but if they do vote to condemn it, you can contact the city attorney's office, and, and, and we'll, we'll walk through with you what the rehab process is.
All right.
Okay.
So anybody else wishing to speak for or against this?
I got a question. Sir, what, what's happening September 10th?
I got a buyer coming in here to buy. He coming from, I don't know, I think coming from Miami, but he said he'd be in Arkansas, and he already, already sent him the pictures of it. He said he, he will come and, and buy.
Ms. Hart? Ms. Hart?
That's what I was trying to confirm, that when they come, they, they for sure are going to buy?
Yes, if it don't, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna pay the taxes and sell it off anyway, you know. What they gonna do, I understand they're going to dem one of the houses. They ain't demming both of them, there's two houses there.
Okay.
But I'm gonna either get it towed out and try to get my brother out of the nursing home and put him back in it, or...
Ms. Ross?
Could I ask Felicia to come up, please?
Felicia?
If she can just kind of explain the process, if this is, you know, we can condemn it, we don't condemn it, it gets sold, and then, then the condemnation process, about how that starts all over with the new owner? If you could just kind of explain. Let her speak, sir.
Uh-huh, and come up to the microphone so it can get recorded.
We'll, we will need to see paperwork that it has been sold, and then we can give the new buyer the opportunity to, we'll give him time to fix it, or, or whatever they're planning on doing. Are they planning on rehabbing it?
Well, one of them, he gonna, we do it, I know one of them.
So the one that, the one that's up for condemnation tonight?
Yes.
Is that the one that he's planning on demoing?
I, I, I imagine he will have to demo, he just gonna buy them both from me.
Right.
Until, what he, he can redo it.
Yeah, because the second one is the one that needs to be demolished.
Yeah.
The first one, we're not condemning tonight.
What it amounts to, sir, is if we go through with the dent, with the, this is behind it, to condemn the property and demolish it, you have approximately six months, but by September 10th, well, you've got time to get with the city attorney and make sure everything that you're saying to us goes through, so they could buy the property, and make, make sure I'm saying this right, get with our city attorney, and make sure you get them there so they can make all arrangements to make sure to do what they want to do, whether it's demolish it or bring it up to code. Ms. Ross?
And they also have 30 days, correct, to file?
Yes, to get with me. But now, if they're going to go ahead and demolish the one or allow it to be demolished, only one of the structures is being demolished, if we do it ourselves, there will be a lien on the property that they'll have to clear up, or they can get a demo permit, your buyer can, and demo it himself so that there's not a lien on the property. Okay? And then the second residence is not being condemned, so, so it, it, it can be lived in.
All right, Ms. Hart?
What, can I ask what the urgency of doing it tonight for versus if he was asking for?
Because he's getting that timeframe anyway. He's got, if we do it tonight, he's got till September 10th to get the buyer, and then after that, he's got another 60 days, 180 days, excuse me.
Well, he needs to get back with a rehab agreement, but it doesn't sound like he's even going to get a rehab agreement. I don't think that he's wanting to rehab the, there's two houses. I don't think he wants to rehab the one that's up for condemnation, is my understanding.
And he, and we've been working with him since January. So it's, it's not a sense of urgency.
There any more questions, please? Mr. Hamilton?
Usually, and this was something that I was wondering about myself, was the sense of urgency. And I think it took, even after the mayor's, working in the mayor's office, I think it took for me sitting on the council to realize that a lot of that sense of urgency often comes from neighbors who have been waiting for action, years for action, and something to be done about the house. And that was a perspective that I had never had before. So getting, hearing from neighbors who were like, the process always takes a very long time, and we've got this process that we do now that if we do condemn it, at least we've got a step. We've gone one step. We still allow for them to do rehab agreements if they want to, but at least we've done that one step. Usually, if, if we don't, then if we don't condemn it, it sometimes takes much, much longer, and promises have often not been kept.
Anybody else? All right, anybody else wishing to speak? We're still in a public, convene a public hearing. Anybody else wants to talk, please come to the microphone. Wishing to speak for or against? Please come to the microphone. Seeing no one else, I'm going to adjourn this public hearing.
Move for adoption.
Motion adopt?
Second.
There's a second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Solaco?
Yes.
Appreciate it, sir. You can sit down, please. Thank you very much.
R. 25140? Mayor Hartwick?
Please read it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1220 Gumma Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Thank you. At this time, I'll convene another public hearing on this, R. 24140. Those wishing to speak for or against, please come to the microphone. Wish to speak for or against R. 140. Seeing none, I'll convene, adjourn it. Please call it.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion adopt, the second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Solaco?
Yes.
R. 25141?
Please. A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 916 North H., H. Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
At this time, again, I need to convene a public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against this, please come to the microphone. Those wishing to speak for or against. Seeing none, I'll adjourn this public hearing.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Solaco?
Yes.
R. 25142?
Please, again. A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 812 West 24th Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Again, I need to convene a public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against R. 25142, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll adjourn the public hearing, please.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Solaco?
Yes.
R. 25143?
Please. A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Again, I need to convene a public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against R. 25143, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, I'll adjourn it, please.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we go back, please, to R 25138? I know that you held that, but this one has been published to have a public hearing. Just in case you bring it back, since this has been in the newspaper, that we're having a public hearing, if we could go ahead and do that.
You want me to go ahead and call it, but then still hold it?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll do it. All right, as the city attorney says, let me go ahead and convene a public hearing. Read that, R 25138, please.
You want to read it again?
Yes. We didn't read it the last time.
Yeah, just so that the address has been said in connection with it. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
R 25138, a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses and other structures located at 1719 Highway 161 in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
We saw a committee of public hearings since it was published. Those wishing to speak for or against it. I know some of them would not speak for or against it tonight, so we'll probably have to do it again. But come to the microphone if you want to speak for or against. Seeing none, I'll adjourn it and we will hold it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I didn't realize it at the time and we had to go back.
It's okay, it's fine. So we're on O 2566, if I'm not mistaken?
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of industrial development revenue bonds under the municipalities and counties' industrial development revenue bond law for the purpose of securing and developing industry, authorizing the sale of the bonds and the approval of a bond purchase agreement and payment in lieu of taxes agreement in connection therewith, authorizing the execution and delivery of a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing and prescribing certain matters pertaining to the project, the acquisition, construction and equipping thereof, and the financing thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement relating to the project and for other purposes.
Thank you very much. With that, I need to convene a public hearing on this, as we always do. Those wishing to speak for or against it, come on up. Identify yourself as usual, please.
Hello, my name is Michelle Allgood and we are serving as the bond counsel in connection with this transaction. If this project sounds familiar to you, it is because we were in front of you November 27th, 2023. This is the Lowe's warehouse facility. And at that time, you approved tax abatement for the project. Since that time, we've had a change in ownership of the underlying landlord. And so I apologize, the lawyer in me felt like we should come, we should identify the current owner of the property and that would be the entity that would be granted tax abatement.
Are you allowed to say who, Michelle?
Yeah, the new, yes, it's in the documentation. The new owner is an Elm Tree entity. It is an entity that is in this business. Their special purpose entity is E.T., the Little Rock LLC. But as originally anticipated, Lowe's is the operator of this project. They have a lease on the facility and will continue to operate it.
Got you, that's what, okay.
Okay.
Questions? We've done this for Michelle, is anything else?
There is no financial obligation to the city.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against this, this public hearing on O 2566? Please come to the microphone. Seeing none, I'll adjourn this public hearing. So please call it.
Move to suspend the readings.
Thank you.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Okay, I know, Michelle, I can ask you another question, too. So I know we do these all the time and I guess it's, I've been watching more, you know, the taxes and stuff and everything to see. Do we ever know basically what that estimated tax would be that we are voting on?
So the maximum amount that you are authorizing of assets that would be eligible for abatement would be 120 million. And so the way that it is calculated is the same way that our property taxes are calculated on our homes and on our cars or on any other commercial property. And so the assessor does the evaluation and then it is just abated by 65%. They pay 35% of what would otherwise be due.
Right.
So I don't have the specific math for this project, but we can certainly provide that if that's.
I think in the future it'd be wise for us, because you know, the cities, when they are doing their budget, they've got to know what's coming back on them. So I've talked to Ember about that before, that we don't know, we vote on it, but we don't know what the total amount, so we help with our budgeting.
And it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg, because you're authorizing an amount not to exceed. And certainly, we don't know what the final cost will be and what the assessed value will be, but we can certainly, next time, bring some numbers and some estimates of what that would look like.
Be good to help with our budgeting. Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton?
And this is, for my own education, this is, I mean, you're, I am not your type of lawyer. This is stuff that barely.
I'm not going to go to court.
I can barely comprehend any of this. But am I right, am I thinking about it the right way that we, they wanted to build this? And we basically said, or we support, you know, using that tax abatement and any property for what, how long?
This is a 30-year period.
30 years. Any property tax we collect from what at that time was an empty piece of property.
That's correct.
But in the future, you'll be able to get some, abate some of your property tax. Okay, so it's possible, one way to think about this is that if we hadn't done this, maybe they wouldn't have built it.
That is the way you should think about this. So this is generally, and anytime that, and Colleen would be better to explain this, but anytime that somebody is looking at making a development in the city of North Little Rock, that is not the only place they are looking.
Yeah.
They may be looking somewhere in Mississippi, they may be looking somewhere in Texas, they may be looking somewhere in Paragould. And so they are looking at the different communities and how those communities will support their project. And the city of North Little Rock has a reputation for being very business friendly and incentivizing these projects and saying, it's not the field of dreams, it's not, they build, this is, no, please, we want you here, come to our community, we will abate your taxes. So it is, that happens before they start the project, before they announce the project. You have asked them to come. One of the things that I like to think about, it's not wholly accurate, that was an empty field. So you were getting some small amount of taxes on it and you were getting 100% of that. You were getting 100% of $1,000 worth of taxes every year. When you put a facility that is 100 million, $10 million worth of equipment, and then the rest of the facility and all of that is getting taxed, that is a significant increase in your taxes. So previously, you were getting 100% of almost nothing and now you are going to get 35% of what. And to your point, you may not be getting that 35% if you hadn't offered that abatement in the first place, because they could have chose another community that would have abated their taxes.
And at year 31, we get 100%, right?
And year 31, you get 100%. And you hope that now they're established and they have refurbished and so you have a facility that's going to last even longer than the 30 years.
I am often skeptical of corporate welfare, but I do appreciate your explanation. Thank you. It makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Ross?
Now, I just want to make it clear that my question was strictly for city budgeting, because 35% is better than zero.
That is correct.
Yes, I understand.
And the way that the pilot agreement, which is one of the many documents that is in this stack, it says that the pilot payment, the payment they make, will be distributed in the same proportion as the taxes are otherwise distributed. So the entity that's going to get most of that pilot payment is your school district here at Plaski County.
I go back to when we did Caterpillar and I remember what we did with that with me and Pat and that group so back then. And we didn't know what it was. We knew we had a motor, we even had a code name for them. So that's been about 25 years ago now. Yes, Ms. Hart, was it Chief? I thought somebody else raised a sign. Anybody else wish to ask questions? If not, thank you, Michelle, appreciate it. With that, I'll adjourn this public hearing.
I think it's already been adjourned. Has there been a motion?
I'll need a motion.
Okay.
Second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
There is not an emergency on this. Okay. O 2567, Council members Robinson and Hart. An ordinance rezoning certain real property located at 2518 Franklin Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C3 to R3 zoning classification by amending ordinance number 9263, declaring an emergency, first reading.
Second.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson? Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
O 2568, Council member Robinson? An ordinance granting a special use to allow an event center in a C6 zone for certain real property located at 717 Main Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency, first reading.
Yes. Hang on, she asked if you were here. So I got to have your name and then we're going to suspend. Give me your name, please.
Kim Allen.
Thank you very much. And then she's asked to suspend it, so go for it. Motion?
Second.
Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Can we get a motion on the floor?
Hang on a second, Ms. Ross.
I only want to make a comment.
Okay. Ms. Fields, what did you say? I'm sorry.
I ask, could we get a motion on this to get it on the floor before we discussed it?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
There it is. And there was a second.
Okay.
Go ahead. Is the motion adopt in a second? Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Ross.
No, I watched planning, you know, I wasn't here, but I did go back and review it. And only 30 people? We usually don't have event centers for 30 people, so.
So to be totally honest with you, we are a co-working space during the day and just realized we could try to make a little more money by having events there at night. So if you want to have a baby shower or wedding shower or small event, birthday party, whatever, we were looking for that. We're certainly not in competition with a larger event center. And we realized that we could not do that because we were not licensed to do it. And so, you know, just in full disclosure, we were doing it and didn't realize. And so we throw ourselves on the mercy of the council and tell you that we didn't realize we couldn't. So that's why we're here. And we did talk with the, I mean, with the planning commission, we met with them, we met with the fire marshal and they said they would absolutely extend that over 30 based on our space. We certainly wouldn't ever want to do more than 40. But for that reason, I mean, they told us we had to have parking, so we moved it down to 30 because we only have five spaces of parking available. And so they said we had to have one, or six places of parking. They said we had to have one for every five people, so that's where the number 30 came from.
Oh, okay.
So that was a limitation that the planning commission or anybody else put on us, that's certainly not one we wanted to put on ourselves.
My question is, I mean, we have street parking downtown and so do we, I'm just thinking, 30 people, not going to make a whole lot of money on 30 people. I mean, if they were, the fire marshal approved you up to 40 or whatever.
The fire marshal approved us up to 99.
Oh, okay, all right.
I think we're too small for 99, but we do have an outdoor area, but he approved us for up to 99.
So what is your ideal number, then? Did you want 30 or more?
Our ideal number honestly would be 50. I mean, we can absolutely have 50 people in there and have a great event.
Mr. Hamilton?
Well, to piggyback on that, I'm perfectly, I don't, parking downtown for me is not an issue. I mean, people, I mean, if people, if nobody goes somewhere because they don't have parking, then New York City's kind of weird. So I'm fine with no parking spots or, you know, raising it up to 50. I certainly support that and I'm happy to make that amendment if nobody else does. My second question was, thank you for coming and doing this and, you know, you didn't realize and you're doing it. I just kind of wondered, how'd you find out you had to do it?
We had an event that we actually, my son is a musician and he came in and did a concert for us, a small Christmas concert, and apparently that was not allowed. And so because that becomes such a public thing, because he's well-known, it was, became an issue. And so I got turned into the city and I think some, I think there's another event place around this corner that may or may not be happy with us doing things like that.
Well, I'm just, I think it probably came from city staff and so I just appreciate our city staff being diligent and I wanted to point that out. I think they did the right thing.
Ms. Ross?
Thank you for doing the right thing.
Ms. Ross?
This is word one and I didn't mean to, I was just questioning why. So it would be up to word one if they wanted to make an amendment, I mean, word two, if they wanted to make an amendment or whatever. But I was just curious after listening to planning on that, so.
Is anybody else? Is there amendment on the floor at all? If not, where are we right now, please?
We have a motion to adopt as is.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt as is. And there's a second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to remind the applicant, with the approval of this ordinance, we'll need to get your business license updated. So if you wouldn't mind visiting with us anytime between 8:00 and 4:30 downstairs.
We'll be here tomorrow morning.
Thank you so much.
They told us we had to do this first, so we'll be there tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Appreciate that. Go ahead.
O 2569, Council member Hart? Please call it. An ordinance waiving certain sections of Articles 5 and 7 of zoning ordinance, ordinance number 9263, for certain real property located at 207 Steed Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to waive landscaping requirements, waiving certain sections of Articles 9 and 15 of the subdivision ordinance, ordinance number 7946, for the subject property to waive half-street requirements, declaring an emergency, first reading. Is the applicant here?
I have somebody like a Christie and a Troy. That is.
We really need.
All right, got you.
If I could, we really need to get this on the floor before we have people speaking on it.
So let's do it as good as we can. Y'all stay right where you are if you don't mind.
So move to suspend all readings.
There you go.
Second.
Motion second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
All right, with that, I need to come over here first and get my, Ms. Robinson.
How about, how about a motion?
Motion to adopt?
Thank you.
Do not vote yet, go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
How about a second?
Can I say?
Go ahead, she says second. Can I get, hang on just a sec. I've got to do a public hearing. Do, can I, can I go to a public hearing?
You, you can go to a public hearing.
Let me just go ahead and do the public hearing with this now.
On, on 2569, do we need a public hearing?
No, we don't, it's seventy, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead, keep on going, Ms. Robinson, my apologies, it's me, it was me, I was ahead.
And, and, and Ms. Robinson, would you turn on your microphone, please? Thank you.
Ms. Robinson, I apologize.
Look like we've requested to waive a whole lot here. Uh, this is a business, it's a daycare, it's a business. I drove out there today and looked at, uh, the, uh, facility and, um, everything. So, as far as the dumpster go, dumpster enclosure, we're not going to waive, I'm, city attorney, help me, I don't want to waive the dumpster enclosure.
Um, um, Ms. Robinson, what you can do, like, right now, the ordinance as it is has to be voted on yes or no. You could propose an amendment to, um, remove that section.
I can propose an amendment to do what now?
To remove the section waiving the, the dumpster enclosure.
It's, sure, I think that would be C.
Is that section one?
On section one, law 11, I think that's number C there.
Okay, section C.
Did I get that right, Amy?
Is, is it the whole, or the following?
So it's A, B, C, and D, isn't it?
It, it may be all a section one.
We've got our whole zoning ordinance here.
I want them, I want the dumpster enclosure for the dumpster.
Do you want?
I want.
Okay.
I don't want the trees waived. If the trees are waived, I want the in lieu of fee. As far as the street improvements, we can waive that. That's a very narrow street, so we don't have to have the sidewalks, curves, and gutters, because that street is very narrow. As far as the lighting go, there were streetlights there. And what may need to happen is that they increase, uh, if the lights are dim, change bulbs out and put, uh, better bulbs, you know, in that. Curves and gutters, we can waive curves and gutters. Storm drainage, I don't have a problem with waiving that. So.
Okay, Ms. Robinson, um, what, what, what I would suggest maybe is, is the things one at a time, um, and propose, um, multiple amendments and, and see if they pass or fail. And the first one would be to, um, amend the ordinance as proposed to delete section one of the ordinance.
Can we allow the applicant to speak to the request?
We will, we hadn't voted on it yet, she's just trying to make amendments.
Okay. So you make the amendments before the applicant speaks, propose it?
Well, we require dumpsters for restaurants, and this is a large daycare. Look like they're expanding. And because they're expanding, I want the dumpster enclosed. And that's a requirement. So I'm not willing to go along with waiving the enclosure for the dumpster.
And so is that, is that your amendment?
So I'm having a problem hearing you.
I'm sorry, if that's your amendment, and then we get a second on your amendment, then, um, Ms. Hart, then it will be up for discussion between the applicant and anyone else.
She made several, she made several amendments.
Well, I said, let's do one at a time.
So you want to do the first one, just one at a time?
We're going to do one at a time.
One at a time.
Yes, ma'am.
Frankly, I'm only, uh, we can waive everything except the trees and the dumpster.
Do you want to?
Do the dumpster first.
But I would suggest, because they are different sections, doing, um, two separate amendments, so that they're considered separately. But if you want it to make one amendment, you can do that, that's up to you.
So, am I to say?
Cause, cause the, the, the council may vote with you on one and not the other. But if you want to put them both at the, on the same amendment, you can do that, that's up to you.
And before we vote, I need to let these people talk, okay?
Well, we need to get it on, the amendment on the floor.
I understand that, but they've got, they've registered a public speaking, so.
Yeah, once we get the amendment on the floor, then it's up for discussion.
So there's amendment to do one at a time right now, correct?
I, I don't know, that's up to Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson, you want to do one?
We can go.
One at a time?
One at a time, we can do one at a time.
There's amendment on the floor to do one at a time on the dumpster enclosure.
Okay, the first would be to remove, um, section one, to amend, to remove section one. Is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
Okay, now y'all can discuss.
Now you can do it, so, all right, here's where we're back to it. Do you understand what just happened? There, all right, here's what happened. Ms. Robinson amended the ordinance tonight to have the fence and dumpster enclosed. She's, and that's not going to be a variance, you're going, she's asking for a vote to make y'all do that. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so, back to, let me let them, is that okay? So you're up, and you're, identify yourself, please.
Um, I'm Christie Angel, I'm the architect for the project.
All right, and then who are the next two people with you?
Mr. Troy, could we?
All right, y'all are on here to speak, all right, so go ahead.
Um, I would just like to say, we're, we're putting an addition on the back of the building. The dumpster was there to begin with, it's always been there. So our stand was, why would we have to enclose it now when it never was enclosed before? And it's not unsightly. It is very well-kept and clean around there. And I don't believe that making this addition to the, to the property is going to increase, yes, there'll be a little more trash, but it's not going to be such that it's going to be overflowing. We're still, our addition is not even half as big as what's there existing.
So, do you, you two, y'all have anything else to say to this?
Well, I was just, just wondering, that, that was my question as well. I mean, we've been there, um, several years, and we never had a complaint about the dumpster. All of a sudden now, just a little addition, and that addition is going to be back further its ways, the other buildings are from the dumpster. And I, we just trying to see.
When you started the business.
Excuse me, I'm talking. And, 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 and we just kind of wondering why did it all of a sudden come up? Because of the addition, I need an explanation, because of the addition, why would we need the dumpster?
All right, that's the question, Mr., to Ms. Robinson, you asked that?
Yes.
All right.
My.
I'll wave to Ms. Robinson, go ahead.
You are, okay. Now, I don't know how long ago your daycare started, but we have had this enclosure for dumpsters in place for quite some time. And what you're increasing, you know, uh, and this, this is like a new thing, this is something, a new addition that you're adding to it. Therefore, the dumpster is a requirement, and I'm not willing to waive the dumpster. I know that with the increasing your, your caseload, which means more waste for food, more waste for diapers, you're going to have more waste. So I want your dumpster enclosed.
Right, if, if it was, uh, if it was due to.
I'm not willing to negotiate on that.
Well, here's the deal right now.
Okay, but what I'm saying, if.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, please, okay, just a second. Let me let you respond, and then I'm going.
Yes, sir.
If there's nothing else, I get, I need to call this amendment to a vote, okay? So, right, real fast.
Say something.
Yeah, real fast. And Nathan, I'll come to if you need to.
Goodness.
All right, and I'll come, Scott. Now, this is a public meeting, hearing, we're not for discussions, just for a minute. Go ahead, please, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say that, uh, the people that owned it before we purchased it from them, the dumpster, I understand, she'd say it's, it's a new thing. But if it was a new thing, the people across the street, their dumpster is just like ours. And our dumpster is behind the building. The kids, not in the eyesight of the kids or the parents. So, nobody from our facility passed the building.
All right, thank you. Now, I've got to go to, I'm going, Nathan, I'm going to go, Scott.
I don't know.
Yeah, I have to go to Mr. Fowler, and then come, Mr. Fowler.
My question, ma'am, is the dumpster being relocated from its current position based on this expansion?
No.
Okay.
All right, then, next would be Ms. Robinson or Mr. Nathan, who?
Nathan can go.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Um, I am starting to be against waivers, so I'm going to support removing this waiver, because I think that we, you know, if you haven't had an enclosure around the dumpster like you were supposed to be having, then, um, I don't fault you for that, but I think it's a good time to update it. I did a bathroom renovation in the back of my house, and the inspector came in here in North Little Rock and touched a smoke detector, and all of a sudden I had a 5,000 bill for hardwired smoke detectors that I had no idea about, because that was code. So, and I was mad as anything. And so I am sympathetic, um, but I am also realizing you're making an improvement to your property, and I appreciate that. I like the improvement, um, and I hope with that improvement, we improve following the code that we've got, and I think that makes sense. So, with sympathy, I just wanted to let you know that I'll be, uh, voting to not grant the waivers.
Ms. Hart, did you have a question? Was you on, did you have something to go, or did I miss?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I've been out there, we've met on several occasions for various reasons connected to it. And looking at the other properties, I, I will say that that may be something that we need to look at as a city, like what our process is when we begin to implement, um, requirements for folks that may serve, especially for our small business owners, that may serve as a deterrent to them working to improve their business. We might want to look at what that process is. Cause while I, while I don't want to show indifference to this particular group, in my opinion, I, I don't think, you know, the enclosure of the, I didn't see it as a necessity based on where the property is. So I don't know if that's a, our process thing.
Well, you're going to get the vote on it in just a second, it's what's going.
The dumpster of the business, when that person who has a dumpster, if they decide to, uh, make the renovation or whatever is needed, they will be required to enclose their dumpster. So you're not being treated indifferently.
No, we didn't think we were.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, you're not being treated indifferently. I saw that dumpster sitting out, I went over there today. I'm very familiar with Mitchum Road, and I'm very familiar with Steed. And North Little Rock wastewater is right, is, is your neighbor. So I'm very familiar with that area. But there was a dumpster sitting out. But when that person decides to renovate or make some changes, they will be required to enclose their dumpster. So you're not being treated indifferently.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? If not, there's a, we're on a, help me.
On, on the motion to amend.
Adopt amendment one.
So, a motion to amend, is the way we're amending, is the way we're taking.
On the motion to amend to delete section one.
Yes, thank you.
Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
It'll delete it.
Enforce the code?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Hart?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
No.
Harris?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Insalaco?
No.
Okay, motion fails. On your, um, second amendment.
So our second amendment's the trees. She was going.
And, and so that motion. And the second thing is the requirement for trees.
And, and that would be, let me get to it.
It's, uh, seven, 2.3, trees.
Sean, how many trees are we requiring?
Sean, did you hear the question?
Zoom in on that.
Here he goes. So, let this gentleman behind you, please, if you don't mind.
Can they put the picture up there?
How many trees are we requiring?
Okay, and, and, and can I interrupt one more time, just, just so procedurally, we're right? Can we, can we do a motion to amend and get a second so it's on the floor? So Ms. Robinson is making a motion to, um, amend to delete, um, the, the street tree requirement, which is the section 7.2.3.
She doesn't want to delete the.
Yeah, she wants to delete the waiver.
Oh, the waiver, that's like, that's.
So we would mark that out of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Is, is there a second on her motion?
Second.
Okay, so now it's on the floor.
How many trees are we requiring?
It would be trees every 30 feet along Steed Road, and it'd be proportional to what they're adding, so there would probably be about four trees.
Four trees?
How many?
Four.
Four trees.
Mr. Baxter?
So originally, Ms. Robinson, you said something about if we are going to allow them to not plant the trees, you said something about paying the in lieu of fee.
They would have to pay the in lieu of fee.
Is that still part of the amendment?
Um, because of the way the in lieu, um, fee on, um, trees is written, that has to come back separately, um, as, as a separate, um, as, 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 as a separate case of legislation. Yes.
Ms., who else, we're right now?
So it's my understanding.
Go ahead.
That you all had agreed to, uh, plant some trees or do a in lieu of?
But we haven't.
No, we didn't come to that decision, that was brought up, and we was wondering.
I can't hear you.
We were, it was brought up, and we were wondering, you know, we didn't, we didn't even have nothing in our, we have no trees, but all of a sudden this came up and mentioned something about trees. And the way we were looking at the property, um, I mean, it's just going to kind of give blind views if you put trees up there near towards the front. I mean, we could, but a few trees, couple of trees, but, but I, I don't see what purpose is in the back of the building. That, that's, because the dumpster is back here, and you're going to be talking about the back of the property, back here in the back. I mean, if you need additional trees, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind planting a couple of big crepe mortals, something pretty that's beautifying, you know, uh, you know, to kind of enhance the property, but just putting a lot of trees and making a whole lot more work, we got enough trees, work around there with lawn care work as it is. But we'll do what we have to do, but.
So the question is, right now, you're going to do trees, and they're saying you need four trees, the in lieu of fee would have to be separate, would, give them the price of what the in lieu of fee would be, Sean?
I can't remember, do you remember?
Sean has a listing of trees.
It's right here, $400 per tree.
How much?
Thank you.
A hundred?
Well, the.
Four.
According, when we went through, uh, design review committee, and, um, they reviewed our site plan review, um, there was a requirement for a minimum of eight tree, street trees, based on the length of the property line next to the street. Well, 75% of that length of the property line is paved. There's no way to put eight trees there. So we would, we've got enough dirt, ground to do.
So I would set four.
Four trees.
Sean said four trees.
But still with the pavement, there's not enough room for.
Four.
For four unless.
Unless you put them in the back.
And, and that's, street trees are.
Street trees in the back.
Are overlapping each other, we don't, I don't grow my trees.
So we're not going by the 30-foot center?
There's room for four trees planted somewhere in that gr, grass area.
Well, that's not their, that's not their property. No, that's not our property right there. That's not their property that's down below the gray. That's not their property. So all that gray, that's an old, that's an old. That's not us. That's an old picture.
Going on property to Steed.
Right, right, so all this is paving, this is all paving, that's paving. So we've got.
So the picture we got is not, is not correct?
Correct, it's not. So it's pavement all around the building. So that's the basis of us wanting, that, we understand street trees and shading, and with the one per 30 feet requirement in the ordinance, we can do two trees along that street to meet the ordinance, if that's acceptable.
What about the parking lot shade trees?
The parking lot shade trees, I believe, based on the number of parking spaces, we're required to have three, um, three trees. But again, half of the parking is on that north side, it's paved all around, there's no place to plant a tree. So we would do, we would look at putting two trees around this parking.
Ms. Hart?
Right now, we're just on the street trees, we're not on the parking lot trees.
I know it, I know it.
Okay.
I had a.
Ms. Hart?
I had a question about, because I know that before I've been out there about some, some issues connected to flooding and drainage, um, and with the trees, um, I want to make sure that if we do add trees, would it not create an issue if there is? Because they tend to have flooding back in that area. And if it floods, will that create some type of safety issue? Or like it falling, a liability issue with the trees falling onto the property? And I'm, I'm only asking that because I've been specifically trying to figure out how to find some money to fix an issue over there with drainage, significant drainage.
Yeah, I wouldn't, sorry, I wouldn't have the expertise to answer if, if a rainstorm would affect the stormwater and the trees.
Would Mr. Cook know?
Would who?
Mr. Cook know?
Well.
No, he would, if you plant a tree, a tree can fall, tree's wrong.
As far as the flooding go, uh, Councilmember Hart, it has always flooded over there. But the city can't do anything until the highway department goes in and do their part. Once the highway department does their part, then the city can go in and do our part. Cause otherwise, we're wasting money if we go in and then, you know, and the highway department doesn't do their part, because it's the highway department, because the highway department is where water is backing up.
My question is referenced in safety.
Hey, 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 if y'all want to have this outside, please take it, I've got a front show here right now, I'm sorry.
So, back to the trees.
So where are we right now, Amy, please? But we're on the trees, and they want to have four trees, is what you're saying they need, Mr. Sean? Say, say again.
We would like to have two trees, and we would like to waive the requirement for paying the in lieu of tree fee for the remaining six.
So right now, I have on amendment that from Ms. Robinson is where we are, okay?
Yeah, and, 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 and she, she has an amendment that has been made and seconded for the street trees to totally delete that whole section 7.2.3, um, so that that would not be waived, so that the street trees would be required. That's the amendment.
So then we have to change it?
It's her amendment, so.
It's her amendment, so y'all get to vote on here in just a second, so.
Uh.
Any more discussion? Is there any more discussion? Now, where are we, Mr. Hamilton?
So I understand it right, that the, uh, amendment is to make sure the trees won't be waived, they will have to follow the, the ordinance.
Right.
And if they would like to change or a waiver for some in lieu of fees, it would come back before us.
It would come back.
So, discussions about two, or how many things.
Right.
Would be a future discussion.
Would be a future.
But right now, we would be voting on requiring that section of the code.
Requiring that section, but we.
We would be saying.
You've got to do that.
We're not waiving it.
We're not waiving.
Right, but you can, you're not waiving the trees.
I would vote in favor of her amendment if I would like them to follow the code.
Yes.
Ross?
No, but I was going to say, but if Councilmember Robinson wanted to say three trees, four trees, five trees, she could also add that into her amendment.
But she, we have to bring it back, so where are we right now, Ms.?
I, I think we're ready for a vote.
I think there is two, so please.
So.
We're about to vote on your amendment.
Unless you want to change your amendment.
We're not waiving the trees.
Right, I mean, that, get, right, that's what your amendment is, is to not waive the trees.
And was there a second?
Add two, rather.
No, I have to come back again to do that. So what we're doing right now, let me explain to y'all, what we do, she's made amendment to trees, okay? We're about to vote on the amendment not to waive them, then you can come back, is what Ms. Fields said, to see how many trees can be put on there at a, at a next councilman. Is that what, did I say it correctly?
Yes, or if you don't want to plant them all, to see if the city council will approve you paying the in lieu fee of $400 per tree.
So right now, only thing we're about to do is vote on her amendment to not waive the trees.
So, so can, uh, okay, go ahead, Ms. Scott, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, so once you vote on it, we're done on this issue, we can't?
You can come back.
I mean, tonight.
No, you can't do it tonight. It has to come back to another amendment, unless it's somebody from the floor, am I right, Ms. Phil, on that? Let's vote on this amendment, please.
Okay.
Let's do this, let's vote on the amendment, yes, real fast, please, huh?
I think Mr. Baxter has a question.
All right, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanna make sure that you have an opportunity to speak on this issue, you know, you seem to have a question, right, as far as whatever action we take tonight, is that the end all be all, what would end all be all, whatever, what, what comment are you trying to make here, ma'am, just so I?
I'm sorry.
Could you take me, please?
If, if, if I understand correctly, and you vote to not accept the waivers, I think that's what she's proposing, to accept none of the waivers of the trees.
On the trees, that's correct.
On the trees, um, then we can't, you're not taking it, we're not taking it under discussion again to talk about the tree, the street trees.
Not tonight.
We have to present this all over again.
To pay the in lieu fee. You, you'll be required, if, if, if the amendment passes, and then the ordinance is amended passes, um, you will be required to comply with the requirement in our code for street trees. You can request to pay an in lieu fee, um, as opposed to planting some of the required trees, that has to come back.
So, how, how, I was gonna say, let me, let me, let me say something, if, now, you, you're passing this, but how many trees, have you put in amount of trees that, that has to be planted, first? Now, first, we tried to, we asked y'all to allow us to do four trees. We've been through a lot, y'all, we've been going, dealing with this, trying to get this building built since March, and it's just little things like that, it has come up, has held us up, it's gave us a hard time. And these little things, if we could just ask y'all to waive that, if we, I do four trees.
Sir, I understand where you're coming from, right now, there's amendment on the floor that says you will not get an amendment to waive the trees, and then if we do have to put how many trees, it could be brought back to us in two weeks to give it?
If, if you wanna pay the in lieu fee, otherwise, they just have to follow what, what, what the ordinance is, and, and that, that, that's measurements.
So, right now, we're ready for a vote, Ms. Hart, please.
So, I'm, I'm unclear, I'm sorry.
So, what's your question, please?
Um, so they would have to, because the requirement was for eight, right?
I don't know if that was street trees, street and parking lot trees, I was not there, um, and, and so the parking lot trees are, are not before us, I was not at planning commission, but when, when I look at our zoning ordinance, our subdivision ordinance, um, the street trees are a matter of math, I don't know what that number is, it, it takes measurements.
We ready for a vote? I don't see anybody else see any questions? Anybody else, I wanna make sure? All right, please.
On the motion for amendment two, remove section for tree waiver, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Oh, yes.
Hart?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
No.
Harris?
No.
Fowler?
No.
Insalaco?
No.
Okay, motion fails. So, is that your last amendment, Ms. Robinson?
Is that your last one?
On the parking lot?
Is that your last amendment?
That's my last.
That's her last amendment, all right.
Okay, so then.
Explain, go ahead, I was about to, go ahead, Amy. Go ahead, no, hang on.
The amendment's failed, so now we need a motion to adopt the ordinance as is, to waive everything, and so is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, is there a second?
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Now, hang on, y'all understand where you are in this event?
Now, now they're gonna vote on it, just like it's written on this piece of paper.
Just like it's written tonight, okay?
Is there a second?
There was a second over here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
I did some discussion, sorry.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
The mayor's running the meeting, y'all, I've just talked a lot, trying to.
You got some more to this, you wanna do something, you want, you wasting, what, talk? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you was asking if they understood, I was just asking if they understood everything.
No, I, I mean.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, am wondering if there's any hardship, I mean, we've got a law that says we've adopted, saying you gotta do certain things, and they're asking not to do certain things, we're talking about that there's flooding issues in the area, but we're gonna waive drainage requirements. We're, I mean, in, in my experience, I thought trees helped with flooding, um, and, and I just, I don't understand why we have this, I'm okay with waivers, I'm not against waivers. If there's a hardship, sometimes it doesn't make sense, I mean, if there's a highway issue, then, you know, explain that one to me, I'm, I'm open to, to waivers, other than we don't wanna pay, what, what are, can, you're the architect, right? Could you help me understand why we should waive the laws that we passed?
Are you speaking about trees?
Nope, I'm, I'm speaking about all of it, I certainly want you to abide by the trees, because those help with, um, I mean, I see zero trees out front now, so I think that would help.
That's not their property, that's not their property.
Anywhere along that line, is there trees in the front?
No.
That red line?
There's no place to put, that's a ditch.
I don't understand this. Mr. Baxter, will you reel the floor to Mr. Baxter for a sec?
Absolutely. It's important for me to know, you, you, I hear, I keep hearing the phrase, that's not our property, this is blah, 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 and we don't have any pointer up here explaining what is what. I mean, you go out there, there's no definitive.
Boundary.
Boundaries of where their property ends and where it starts, so if, Sean, do you have your magic pointer? It sure would help me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, while they're getting ready, Mr. Harris?
So, the property line is right.
All right, nevermind.
Goes right about here. And the property line on the front goes probably right along there. It's all, this is all paving.
When did that become paving?
When we purchased it, that's the other people's, that's how it looked when they had it, our property don't look like that.
Why do we have that picture, Mr. Spencer?
That was, uh, I wasn't able to get, that was the only one we could find online.
So, what's confusing now is we really don't have a good sense of the property, where we are right now, is you've been voted, we're about to vote on the trees have been voted down, correct? And what, the only thing left out there, if I'm not mistaken, I'll confuse you, Ms. Hart, is the amount of trees.
No, what, what's left out here is the whole.
The whole thing.
Yeah, the whole.
Sorry, Ms. Hart?
Yes or no on the whole?
I was just gonna say to how I see it for Mr. Hamilton, Councilman, Councilman Hamilton, that in the same way that we did the tax abatement, we gave incentives to a larger corporation because we wanna incentivize them doing business here, um, I think in these type situations, when we have small business owners that are trying to expand their business, um, if we can create opportunities to incentivize them to grow their business in North Little Rock that do not negatively affect, like, our city, our infrastructure, but it only helps the business owner, I just think it's more of an incentive for them to continue to do business in North Little Rock. That's how I looked at this particular thing with this business, and, and just understanding the question that we have with the tax abatement for the larger company, I think it's similar to that. So, sometimes there are some things in our ordinance that don't necessarily connect with what's happening today, and this is, just so happens to be one of those things.
Anybody else?
Very well said.
All right, where are we right now? Help me again, please. We're about to vote on the ordinance as written, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second.
And we have a motion and a second. All right.
On the motion, Ross?
I got one qualifier there on mine. Sorry, 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 sorry. Being on the tree board, I, I, waving trees, I can't do that, and then, uh, Councilmember Hart was talking about the drainage problems, and then we're dr- we're waiving the drainage, so my vote is no.
Oh, okay.
No, it's her vote is no.
Hamilton?
I voted to not waive last week, or to council, uh, no, I haven't heard enough hardship.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.